Meeting with a prayer by Councilman Wright, we'll follow that by pledging to the flag. Councilman Wright?
Join me please. Heavenly Father, we're thankful tonight for another opportunity to come together and, Father, we're thankful for all that are here in attendance. And, Father, for those who are winding down their terms of service to the city, we appreciate and we applaud their contributions to the citizens in our town during the past several years. Father, bless their families for being selfish, sharing these men during the many hours that we spent together here. And, Father, we ask that you would bless Mayor Mason, Councilman Lee, and Councilman Manning as they begin another chapter in their lives. And, Lord, for those of us who are elected and will be elected to carry on this work, we ask that you would always give it to God and Christ on your part.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Chris Ayer?
Here.
Wayne Mess?
Here.
Randy Collins?
Here.
Ken Mead?
Here.
Sam Monahan?
Here.
Concluding everybody's packets, a copy of the minutes from the August 2nd meeting is our motion to approve of this. Motion by Councilman Best, second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hager. Councilman Best.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Hager.
Yes, sir.
Floor is open for questions or discussion, corrections, amendments, releases. Call the roll.
Chris Ayer?
Yes.
Wayne Mess?
Yes.
Randy Collins?
Yes.
Ken Mead?
Yes.
Sam Monahan?
Yes.
Their motion to approve the payment of bills from the previous month?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Hager, second. Second by Councilman Hawley. Councilman Hager?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Hawley. Floor is open for question or discussion. Call the roll.
Chris Ayer?
Yes.
Wayne Mess?
Yes.
Randy Collins?
Yes.
Ken Mead?
Yes.
This time, if your delegations from the audience, if anyone would like to address council, you may do so at this time. If you would stand and state your name and try to limit your comments to three minutes to accommodate others that might like to speak. Delegations, no delegations, move on to old business, Councilman Hawley. Yes?
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is John Dennis. Yeah, I live in Rockville, I lived there in Harriman and Cornstalk Heights before my wife and I had. And, I love the city, maybe it's much more than Rockville. I keep talking to my wife about moving back over here and I work here and it's been at least my third time in Harriman. And, I've had dreams for many years, dreams and hopes, and hoped that I would get some extra money to help get the Prince Theatre started, but none of that ever happened. But, I appreciate the mayor and everybody that worked on it and made it happen because it's a real blessing, not just for the city of Harriman, but for anybody that comes here. I just love to bring my family and enjoy that. I also have a concern about the way our country is headed right now. And, I believe that our founding fathers were divinely inspired in the Lord in coming together and forming a constitution of the United States. And, I believe this constitution is hanging by a thread and I hope that we can all look into it and examine, examine, you know, where we're at and what steps we need to take in the next election perhaps. I do want to mention the preamble, and if anybody cares to join me, they can, that we, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves and our posterity. I do ordain and establish this constitution of the United States of America. I see our country headed in a direction that I don't care for, a direction that wants to take down a level of wealthy people, and I've never had wealth, but I want wealthy people and I want wealthy corporations because that gives me employment. And, I believe we need to have those, otherwise we'll all be working for the government down the road and it might not be who we wanted to be. Hey, Rick, thank you very much for allowing me to come.
Thank you, John. Still on our delegation, if anyone would like to address council. Move on to old business, Councilman Hawley? Councilman Lee?
Yeah, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank everybody for the opportunity I've had to serve. That's previous councils I've been on with, the mayor and Ken that I've been on with the last nine years, the citizens, Harriman. I don't feel that I'm done with public service, so if you would continue your support on to me wherever I might end up in what I might end up doing. The city employees, always been a joy. The department heads, good to work with, so just let all them know that. And then, of course, my family for allowing me the time to go to meetings and workshops. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Might as well do it right now. We had a plaque made for you and for Councilman Manning. It's a simple plaque, but it's an appreciation for years of service as a council member for making Harriman a better place, 2007 to 2016. We appreciate it. Councilman Best?
No, sir.
Councilman Hager?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Wright?
Yes, sir.
Old business, Dr. Curley?
Uh, no, I'll cover it.
Allison, any old business?
Yes. Yesterday, I was contacted by the Election Commission for the number transfer. The one that falls under old business, you may recall in April, we passed a tax sale referendum for the ballot for November, and we didn't provide a summary. I guess as the city attorney, they wanted me to provide a summary of what the ordinance is going to do for the people, and they get a yes or no question because they're not attaching the whole ordinance like we thought they were. So, I've prepared some options from the recommendations of the city manager and the Election Commission Administrator for you to look at and put your input on so that we can finalize the language for the ballot. You can take any passage down, you can turn that around as well.
When do we need to have this?
As soon as possible.
Do we have a vote?
I don't think so. Technically, it comes from the city attorney, but because there's so much discussion, I wanted the council to have the opportunity to give your input. The summary part of it is the same for both options, and essentially, the difference is the first one says the sales tax is now that it's 2.5 percent and will increase to 2.75 percent, asking for it to become operative, or the other one just says to increase it to 2.75. And myself and the city manager thought option one would be the more preferred choice because then people can see that, if they just see the 2.75, it might look really big to them, but really it's a smaller increase.
Can we let you know by email before the end of the week? Is that enough time? Or sooner than that?
I think so. The sooner the better because the Election Commission wants to get the ballot.
About tomorrow? Can everybody do this by tomorrow? Is it a little early?
I'll make sure I get it due.
Yeah, I'll send it to Kevin. I got one for me. I'll get it done.
So, that's all I had on old business. If I could just get everyone's input and start letting the Election Commission know.
Okay. Old business, Kevin? Move on to HUB report, Bill Young?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We missed you last week.
Well, I was on vacation, but my wife made me work, so I'd probably be better off than her. First of all, Councilman Lee, I appreciate your service and your work and everything. Appreciate you, Councilman Manning. Mayor, it's been a privilege to work with you. You've done an excellent job. I remember early on in the Asheville episode, we were in tons of meetings, and the mayor was kind of fussing about having to come to all these meetings. I remember I looked at him and I said, "Well, Mayor, you can get $125 a month. What are you complaining about?" And, you know, and I don't think people really realize, Councilman Lee, I appreciate you coming, is what these folks deal with and get only the privilege of service and then all the complaints and everything else. So, thank you for that. Of course, Councilman Wright, thank you for being willing to serve again in there for our new mayor. Look forward to working with you, Mr. Pitts. So, just a personal word there, and I'll get through this and hush up. Our gas, we've been talking about the gas main replacement that we're doing in downtown area. We actually have a pre-construction meeting that will be held at our offices tomorrow. The bargers, the contractor own that, and tomorrow we'll establish the date for work to proceed, so that should be coming up in the next few weeks to get that project started. The CDBG grant, we had a pre-construction meeting, the notice to proceed is dated for August 1st. The contractor is not yet started or finishing the project. That start date should be just in any day. It's scheduled for 120-day completion. I don't see any problem with this meeting timeframe so that there can be another application for you to get your G-grant in the next cycle. Margery Bridge, everything over there is done from our perspective. We had to get a permit from railroad to remove the pole and the wire that the contractor needed out of the way. All paperwork was sent in about two weeks ago. They said hopefully a two-week turnaround, so again, any day, and as soon as we get that, it's not going to take us long to take that out, and it should be ready to go. And, one final thing in the electric department, we had a, we did some work a couple of years ago at the Blair Substation, and part of that was the new control building. We have moved the old control building there down to our Carter Station and have wired all that in, so that's all in operation there now. Station's back in service where we had the problem when TDA's line burnt down there a little while back. And, we did have to send one of the transformers there to be rebuilt and still waiting for it to come back. That's what I have behind us. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Department reports? Private department?
No report.
Police department?
Have nothing to report this time.
Alan Clarkson, Rick?
Nothing to report. I'd just like to take this opportunity to invite everybody over to Wallace Blackfield this coming Saturday. We open up our league play, city league football and cheerleading with our jamboree. You can get to see those nice shining blue helmets that you helped purchase. I appreciate you.
What time?
Starting at nine o'clock, going up until 5:15, but the Harriman team starts at three o'clock. Our little guys starting, and then the older boys finish at 5:15.
Okay. Thank you. Josh, you have anything?
No, sir.
Rebecca Switfinger?
I just have, we have the last cruise in this Saturday, and it's eight noon, so you can go to that and then go to the football jamboree. And then, I've got some other stuff I'm going to touch on later. The regular Harriman's fast approaching, we're a little under a month away, so we still have applications out for vendors that want to do it. And also, I'm going to take this opportunity while I can speak, we from the city office and everything have something for you, Mayor. Just a little thanks for your time in office, and we listed some of your accomplishments, although it's not all of them.
It's a free talk.
We don't want to write the whole thing on there, so I just picked some highlights. If you're unhappy with it, you can go and get it from me.
No, I'm not.
But, Teresa, I want this, Mayor.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Dr. Curley?
Uh, I'll speak later on in the budget.
Allison, any new business?
Given that we just had an election, there are some anticipated vacancies that are going to come up on the council. The Election Commission has informed me we're going to have to have whoever's appointed and whoever wants to qualify can run for election in November, so we need to discuss the ordinance, and I've drafted that. If anyone discusses an hour, wait and wait for the agenda to be at the end of the meeting.
Al's fine.
I've got copies for everybody. Because it's a non-regular municipal meeting, we felt it was most appropriate to do ordinance, and we have to read it twice to pass it. The Election Commission said that we could go ahead and pass it now without the vacancies being open so that we can have it in. There is a time crunch to get everything qualified. We have to have, the qualifying deadline for the November election is September 14th, and so we have to get our ordinance and everything to the Election Commission by September the 9th. And so, we wanted to make sure we had enough time without getting our timeline fuzzy with our 10 days and second reading and getting it sent to the commission.
Okay. Can we put this on the special meeting for the 23rd? Or if there's a motion to accept it now, if you want?
It has to be passed twice and sent to the Election Commission, and there is a distinction, we have to distinguish on the ballot, one seat will be an unexpired term of two years and another would be what I'm referencing as a resigned seat of four years. And so, people would have to qualify and specify which specific seat they're running for.
Does everybody understand what this is and what the sense of urgency is? Is there a motion to do this now?
Before we put it on the floor, I don't really think it's not the customary thing that we put an ordinance out and not be on the agenda for one thing, so.
Right. So, do you all want to put it on the 23rd then on a special public?
Would it be a problem if we do that and let the new council pass it on second reading just like that?
We can. It'll be early September, as long as it passes, that first meeting in September. I believe the charter says it's a majority of eligible aldermen, whether it's six or four, or however many that do.
Well, that's one thing is, I guess I should go ahead and speak because being on here nine years, and the ones that have resigned in the past and left, we've done it a couple different ways, and I don't really know why this council that's sitting now want to approach it, because when I first came on, Chris's layer approached it when it happened, and he handled it like one we didn't fill and then one we filled. So, one we left open eight months, so I would think if the only new mayor and council they want to fill is it.
Well, I mean, the new mayor can certainly appoint the people to fill the temporary vacancy that the charter says, that those people, I think I quoted it, that those people can only serve until the next general election, and the next election's November, so we have to get them in and qualify, so the mayor's appointments will be for two months. And those people are allowed to qualify and run for the election in November. The Election Commission said we've got to try to meet that subsequent deadline.
But, it actually says that if, I guess if being the new mayor, if he appointed someone to the vacant seat, the person would be appointed to hold said office until next general election. It doesn't say anything about how it gets put on the next general election.
Well, next general election is November.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, there's nothing.
So, whether he appoints somewhere or not, we still have to vote November.
If we meet the deadline?
Right.
My question is on the second meeting, or your third?
Well, no, I just, I just don't really understand why we're putting this on the agenda for this council to decide. I mean, it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense.
I think the result would be the same no matter which council it is, because the result is there's going to be open seats, and so those people have to run for election, whether it's November or two years from now, someone's going to have to.
So, the Election Commission contacted you and said we needed to do something?
We had reached out with the anticipation of open seats, and then they had also contacted me about the tax thing I brought up, and they said.
Is we? Could you kind of tell me?
Myself, I did.
Your question?
I called the Election Commission and asked them.
But, nobody from the council or mayor's side of setting?
No, I called.
I have the question of whether with regard to the four-year term, if the person who was elected to that position chose not to take the open office, does the visit revert to the next person, next highest vote total in the election? So, I ask Allison that question. I just think we're jumping the gun, but you know.
Can we, can we, can we pass the ordinance before we have?
I think it's got to be responsible, you know, there's going to be two open seats. Trying to act. We can let the new council have it, and they'll miss the deadline. You know, we can let them purposely miss the deadline, and we can be responsible and take action now.
Well, I'm just saying, I think they'll get their sayings if we pass it and then make it the second reading of it, and they can pass the deadline.
Wow.
Let's put it on the 23rd, deal with it then, and then if we get a no vote then, then the new council will handle it. How about that? We'll put it on the 23rd, special public. You guys, any other new business?
No.
City manager, new business?
With the vertical paving project, all of the milling work has been completed. Looks like we're in good shape from the standpoint of the budget, and the milling work, which is one of the things we were most concerned about, it's more difficult to estimate than the actual paving was going to be. And, at this point, we're expecting the paving crew to be back in town either tomorrow or Thursday to begin paving once again. We're beginning to schedule some meetings with the development district to discuss the next round of grant applications for labor this year for historic grants, which is funding that could be applied to the campus building. We hope to have a meeting later this week to discuss that. It'll be several months for the grant applications themselves to be due. Also, meeting with the Cornstalk Heights Neighborhood Association and United Way to discuss a possible partnership there to do a project up at the local park. On the 16th this month, WBIR has contacted us and is wanting to come to Harriman and do a session that they call 10 Lessons, and wants to highlight some of the accomplishments and challenges and plans that the city of Harriman has going forward, so that will be an event. They'll be featuring on their newscasts on that particular day. Reminder to everyone that the deadline for applying for the finance officer or the city judge is August the 12th. The deadline for applying for the police chief position is August the 15th, and for those who are interested, August the 31st, September the 1st, and possibly September the 2nd, if needed, will be the assessment center for the police chief position.
Anybody here?
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Do you have a number on the African finance judge and chief?
How do you know? Teresa, do you have any ideas? Right now, we're giving a couple on each other. I know we get served when you left the police chief, I'm not sure about the other.
Committee reports. We can then move on to the agenda, discuss and approve the purchase of the Farmer's Market Pavilion. Kevin?
Met last week with the committee that you appointed to review the Farmer's Market Pavilion and to deal with the grant funds that we have. I think you received some documentation in your packet. Those drawings may not have been, have turned out very well, but this is the proposal that the committee came up with. Pass this around, let's take a look at it. The proposal is to put this structure which would house approximately six vendors at Riverfront Park. It would be located between the playground and the pavilion that has the restrooms in it. The design was selected to try and complement the gazebo that's located currently at the park, and the grant funding would go fully towards construction of the project, and the committee is recommending that you set aside an additional $25,000 that the city has matched to complete the project. Total project cost would be around $65,000 to $70,000. There were several options, two of the committee members are here, and they can give their own personal insight if they'd like, but there were several options that were looking at at one point in time. Costs could have certainly been brought down by making the structure not as decorative, not designed necessarily to try and match the gazebo that's located at the park, but I think they felt like trying to keep that same look throughout the area was preferred, even if that meant having spent more money than what our minimum match was for the grant.
I'd like to make a motion, give it a little discussion. Motion to go ahead and accept this, you're talking about accept the quote for $63,000, that's one. By Councilman Best. Second, my Councilman Hager, Councilman Best?
I sit on the committee, and let's put $25,000 into this thing. I think it's going to be an asset to the park. You know, if we're just putting in $25,000 towards the ability to size, it's not just going to be for a farmer's market, and that's what we discussed, it's going to be for events, birthday parties, wedding receptions, and it goes along with our gazebo. I think it's a great asset. I look at what Keyston's done at their park, I've looked at what's in it, and we haven't done anything a long time down there, and I think $25,000 is a small amount of money to spend $63,000 to have this built down there, because I think it's going to benefit the whole city as a whole.
Councilman Abrams?
I just echo what Councilman Best said. I'm excited about, I'm looking forward to this.
Floor is open for questions or discussion. Motion on the floor to accept the price quote for the Farmer's Market Pavilion, $63,720.
Well, we need to make a commitment to the budget. I have that. Did you approve it now or just in the over shoot? But, what? Dr. Curley, do you have a preferred line on?
For the match, or?
Yeah, the extra that we're putting in for the design standards.
I'll have to think about it. It's not part of the grant, is it? Is it our match to a grant?
It's a $25,000 match.
Part of it is our match, but we are putting in more than the minimum required. Our match is included in that total.
I'll probably put it in grand line.
Like I said, I think the architect of the building is fit right in, and hopefully got them in as far as the gazebo. I think we need to update the bathroom area for the gazebo part in this building.
Floor's still open. So, essentially, we're hitting a $90,000 bill for $25,000 if this passes, right? And that's what we're working on.
$70,000, that's pretty big.
Kevin, how far away from the existing pavilion is this structure?
The pavilion that has the restrooms in it.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought you were referring to those.
It's, there's a little paved parking area that's between the playground and the bathrooms, and it would be along the backside of that parking area.
Okay, so you could have function going on in all this place at the same time.
It would end up being the closest shelter to the playground.
If approved tonight, when would you expect it to be completed?
If I recall, once we placed the order, it's six to eight delivery, six to eight weeks delivery time, and then our focus is to request a prison crew to assist the city during this election.
At least by spring then, hopefully, right? Any other discussion or questions?
Does that labor reduce the amount of money we contribute?
It could if we were going with the minimum budget, but since we're putting in extra $25,000 required to make up the difference in what the structure costs.
Any more discussion? Call the roll, please.
Chris Ayer?
Yes.
Wayne Mess?
Yes.
Randy Collins?
Yes.
Ken Mead?
Yes.
Discuss and approve purchase of emergency recording software for the fire department. Kevin?
Sorry, I don't have the current chief.
Chief Bailey?
This is just part of the budget, the proposed FY '17 budget is to buy this operated package. It's a one-time setup fee of $749, and then the annual subscription for this year would be $1,788 for a total of $2537.
And this is just a much better package. Well, we really don't have anything right now that's going to provide this. Both of our sister cities and nearest are using this one. Rockwood just went to it and went to the rollout for that and then we're doing the train. And this is going to allow us to, we want to be data-driven and this is going to allow us to start capturing data that we can't right now. So pre-planning, training, hydrants, shift reports, fire inspections, apparatus maintenance, et cetera, all this goes in and it rolls up a daily roster from that. Right now, there's a lot of redundancies we have to do every time we go out to the house to any type of incident, we have to do two, we have to do the incident report twice just for, once for the state, once for ours. So this is, this is just, I think it's the normal standard that we need to be at.
So you're asking us to approve the purchase of this software, $2,537?
Yes, sir. For this year. Again, it's in the FY17 budget.
Motion to approve. Motion on the floor by Councilman Ayer, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Best. Councilman Ayer?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Best?
Thank you.
Floor is open for questions or discussion.
It's in the 17 budget?
Currently in the one that we're going to maybe pass tonight, first reading.
So it's contingent on the pass.
Any more discussion, questions? Call the roll, please.
Chris Salem?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Wayne Collins?
Yes.
Discussing approved first reading of ordinance 0816-01, an ordinance increasing the pay for the offices of Mayor and Alderman in the city of Harriman, Tennessee. This is because the pay for this board up here is the same as it was, I think, in 1965. So to make it easier on councils to come from here on, we're, we are trying to increase the pay for the ones that come in behind us.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Ayer, second by Councilman Me. Councilman Ayer?
You know, I was a bit hesitant at first, but I think that it's good for people to be compensated for their time. It helps, I think, all these people run for city council. For those of us who are self-employed, our time is extremely valuable. So it's a pleasure to serve in this position. It's an honor. And I think that, I think it's important to note that this is not a pay raise for this council. This is a pay raise for future councils. So this takes effect later in the future.
That's right. This does not take effect on anybody here. It will take effect on the people coming in behind. Councilman Me?
I agree with what Chris said. I'd just like to add that, I mean, I put it on here and Kevin had worked on it for me. Didn't get it on in time for the previous meeting. However, I know Councilman Ayer, Councilman Best can't vote on it because it could potentially affect them, so they're not allowed to. I agree, though, with everything that Councilman Ayer said.
I hope that they would give some type of disclaimer so that they could vote or it won't pass. I don't think they will. If they don't vote...
If they pass, the pass should go with prevailing vote.
The prevailing vote will be failed because if it fails, lack of, there's a degree. Anyway, I don't need to, I don't need to try to rig it by just making everybody aware.
It could potentially affect all of us at some point if we continue to run for office.
Doesn't, it doesn't affect, of course, your safety, someone's safety, so this time around. If you ran again yesterday.
Yeah, it won't, it won't increase theirs, though.
No, it won't. If that's to your favor, it won't increase. But if it counts, we should call the polls open in that scenario.
So what kind of disclaimer you need?
I don't, well, not necessarily any other than, I don't guess anything. I just, just the numbers in my head popping out loud.
So would it affect, if Councilman Ayer voted for it, would it affect him running the office on the 1st?
It would.
If he didn't vote for it, it wouldn't affect him. Is that why I'm saying?
It is to be made effective for the newly-elected Councilman.
On the 1st?
Well, three of them, not the three.
Yeah. After each position is seated for the first time. So in his case, because he is being seated into that position for the first time, getting the 1st, his would increase.
If he did a vote for it?
No, either way, if it passes.
If it passes.
Let me just, let me be clear. It's going to raise the salary of the mayor from, to $300 a month. The citizens will get their money's worth after the second day of the month, by the way. Councilman's pay will go to 150 a month.
And this is comparable for, I almost know, to the cities and counties, we're not going way up above anybody we're on. So if this is about the same value.
Yeah, it may pay for your gas, your fuel. Any more discussion? This is first reading. We'll have two readings. Call the roll, please.
Chris Salem?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes, sir.
Wayne Collins?
Yes.
Wayne Wright?
Yes.
We'll have second reading, I think, on the 23rd, special call meeting. Next to the last items, discussing approved first reading on ordinance 0816-02, an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance of the City of Harriman, Tennessee, Adopting Annual Budget Tax Rate for Fiscal Year Beginning July 1, 2016." Dr. Curley or Kevin, whoever wants to say something.
Let me give you sort of the landscape of the ordinance. Basically, the ordinance has Tennessee code requirement that funds of political subsidies be appropriated. Second paragraph says, "Request governing body of each municipality to adopt and operate under the annual budget ordinance." And the third paragraph, "The governing body publishes this in a paper prior to, at least in days prior to meeting, when the governing body will consider final passage." As I've done before, I will summarize each section unless you want to go over the numbers in detail.
Summarize will be fine.
Okay. Section 1, "The governing body estimates anticipated revenues to be as follows. The general fund revenues will be $6,648,472. And then there are fund balances of restricted committee that signed and unassigned of $7,758,384, giving total available funds of $8,406,856. The debt service fund will have total available funds of $437,158. The dirt fund will have total available funds of $64,082. The solid waste management fund will have total available funds of $390,351. The State Street Aid Fund will have total available funds of $380,000. The Capital Project Fund will have total available funds of $1,985,786. Section 2, "The governing body appropriates for the general fund total appropriations of $6,393,053. The debt service fund, total appropriation $437,158. The drug fund, total appropriation $64,082. Total appropriation for solid waste management, $332,000. And State Street Aid Fund, $380,000. Capital Project Fund, $1,985,786. In Section 3, "We forecast what the fund, ending fund balances will be if the budget is completed as indicated. The general fund balance will be $2,013,823. That includes all funds, including reserves and current revenues and minus expenses. The solid waste management fund will have $58,351. Section 4 deals with indebtedness. We'll have note payments of $363,738. And interest will be $73,420. Capital leases will be $32,75140. And the interest will be $5,405.21. The other section to deal with standard boilerplate. We cannot exceed spending of this without an amendment. We can transfer monies from one appropriation to another under Section 6 with your approval. And Section 7, "The detailed line item budget will be prepared, which you have seen, and will be available. Section 8, "If for any reason the budget ordinance is not adopted prior to beginning next fiscal year, we basically have a carryover into the next year, a continuing budget." Section 9 is the only one that needs some additional explanation. We currently have a property tax of 1.2197. Basically, I've rounded that off to $1.22. The impact of that rounding is insignificant and not, for a $100,000 appraisal, it means seven cents. For a $200,000 appraisal, it means 15 cents. However, because we round off to the nearest dollar, there will be no consequence because it will be the same as $1.22. Okay? There's a provision in Section 10 for the Grand State Community College, Henry Stafford, East Tennessee Agricultural Exposition Center, of $50,000. And it says, "All income balances will remain at the end of fiscal year and collapse and revert to the respective fund balances. And wage and salary adjustments should take effect July 1, 2016." And this ordinance shall take effect July 1, 2016, Public Real Estate Department. Passing first reading the night day of August 2016. Chris Mason, Mayor, and attested by Mr. Daniel S. Buck.
What's the will of council on this first reading? Okay. Motion to amend. Huh? Okay. 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 Motion by Councilman Holly to go ahead and approve on first reading, or second?
Second.
Whoop, second by Councilman Ayer, Councilman Holly. Councilman Abrams?
I'm looking forward to the next meeting where we can complete our discussions that we were having before this meeting regarding the budget. I think we'll get everything worked out.
Floor's open for questions or discussion. Is Section 10 right? Is that 28.57 percent correct percent?
Uh, Section 10.
Calculated at a rate of 28.5.
Yeah, that's right. Up to a maximum of $50,000.
Is this, um, we will make our first amendments to what we discussed earlier, we're waiting on all that.
I think, I mean, I think we can make amendments now and if, if the amendments pass, they'll be included. You can always make a motion, make amendments, or we'll pass them.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we amend the one that we just brought up to add the increase for the entry level at the parking wreck and street department to the 4%. Add $500 one-time donation into the county cause. A $3,500 increase to the foot repair, riverfront dock. And add $25,000 to the grant line item for the Farmer's Market Pavilion.
Motion on the floor right now is for an amendment, the amendment's to include a 4% increase for the parks and wreck.
In the street.
In the street park. $500 donation to cause, a $3,500 increase in the Riverfront Park line item.
Which goes to the wreck.
For, that's right, for, for the dock repair. $25,000 for the match of the, and then some for the Farmer's Market Pavilion. And that's how you understand it, Councilman Best.
Yes, sir.
There's a motion in a second.
You have anything else, Councilman Best?
Councilman Best? Anybody have any questions or discussion about the amendment?
Clarify the 4% again, please.
The 4% is for the, what's the, the entry level. You want the additional 4% as a line item? He is, the sheet that you have in front of you.
So it's a combination of two different line items. You have time for it.
You got that? You got that? Okay.
That's how you understand it, Councilman Best.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any more discussion about this amendment? There's a motion in a second for the amendment. That's all you're voting on right now, not the first reading. All in favor of the amendment, please vote with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise. Now we go back to the original motions of the ordinance 0816-02, first reading of the budget. Still under discussion.
I got one question on Section 12. Places and salary adjustments shall take effect after July 1, 2016, but not prior to second reading and final passage of the document. So third raise won't go back to July 1, is that the way I understand it? It will only take effect.
It depends on whether you want to override that. If you want it retroactive, we can do that.
I'm making a motion to amend it. Get it to raise as effective July 1.
Motion on the floor to make all raises that are in question for employee salaries to be effective and retro back to July 1, 2016. And motion by Councilman Best, second by Councilman Wright. Councilman Best. Motion, Councilman Wright. Floor's open for questions or discussion about this second amendment.
One, one question. Do you want to give those employees who left our employment that raise for the period of time since, say, July 1?
Are there any?
I don't know, but we have had in the past.
Yeah, last year, I mean, they actually went back and issued small checks from foolish of the city.
That's probably the right way to do it. They were here during that time. We are making pay retro during the time that they were here, so whether they come up and pick up a $2 check or whatever.
I agree. I think this, our fiscal resource to 1, I feel like the question for the third raise on July 1. I don't, for the most, I don't, we didn't pose too hard a question. But not a...
Motion in a second. Is there any more discussion about this second amendment? All in favor, vote with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise. Go back to the original motion.
Okay, there's one other thing I did put in that came up in discussion for pay, and that is, with everything that's gone on and the work that's been done, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to amend it to show that City Manager Kevin Helms gets a 5% increase.
Motion by Councilman Me, second by Councilman Ayer, Councilman Me.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Ayer?
Yes, sir.
Floor's open for questions or discussion. Just like some of our departments, that department is significantly underpaid and so about 15%, so 5% on top of what's there. Probably over the next three years, we'll pull it close. Any more discussion about the third amendment? Call the roll, please, on the third amendment.
Chris Salem?
I'm sorry. All in favor of the third amendment, vote with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? I think it's how hard you were working. Still under discussion for the original motion and the second for the budget. We'll have a workshop Tuesday for anyone that wants to come. And then we'll have a special call meeting to address just this and two other items on the 23rd for the second reading. Is there any more discussion about this?
I'd like to stress one thing.
I'd like to stress one thing, just whenever I could. We're setting the tax rate at 1.22. I hope everybody understands that there's no money in here for improvement to our roads and stuff, that's what we're hoping on this tax that we're proposing, so just know that there's no money in here to improve our roads. We're banking on this sales tax increase, so I just hope everybody understands that the sales tax increase is basically the same as what Dr. Curley said a while ago. We rounded it up to 1.22, which is really not going to affect you that much. We're rounding our, our sales tax up 0.025, which is not going to affect you that much, but it will affect your roads and the infrastructure community. It's very important that we let people know that that increase is just for your roads, and that's the only place we can use that money. So just know that it's a big issue, because we didn't bust any money up to take care of those issues.
Okay.
And we're the point, too, that puts us even with our surrounding communities, because they've already passed it.
Both duly noted, still under discussion. Being no more discussion, we'll call a roll on first reading of ordinance 0816-02.
Chris Salem?
Yes.
My best?
Yes.
Eddie Holly?
Yes.
Amy Lee?
Yes.
Ronnie Wright?
Yes.
Last item on the agenda is discussing approved Jupiter Entertainment request for the filming at the old hospital. Rebecca, you want to do that, or?
Yeah, I can work on that. I actually met with them today, walked through the hospital, and they just sent me the times. They're going to come this, next Thursday, the 18th, and they're going to start filming at 10:00 a.m. It sounds like they're going to be there probably all day, because I know they're doing stuff later, like 6:00, usually they're, they're there for most of the day. I'll go and let them in, turn the lights on, check on them, go and close everything up when they're done. They've, they've also already, they've paid all their past ones, so we're, we're even with them, and they, this is, I think, their fifth time coming in, I'm trying to convince them, but, um, they're just shooting under TV and PDM stuff there. And they're always really great, they come in, they don't, they don't make a mess, they don't disrupt anything.
What are we approving for them to pay? How much?
Uh, they pay $500 a day.
Okay.
So.
Same, same as last?
Same as every time they come, yeah.
Same liability release?
Same, and I have a release for us to sign for them if we do accept to use the property.
Motion. Motion by Councilman Ager, second by Councilman Best to go ahead and accept the proposal for Jupiter Entertainment, Councilman Ager?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Best.
I'd like to follow up on that.
How that they will come through.
Floor's open for questions or discussion. Can we do this time, can we stick this money back and use it for landscaping around a little bit of the hospital in Timbersville like we did that one time? We need, we need some attention. Call the roll, please.
Chris Salem?
Yes.
My best?
Yes.
Eddie Holly?
Yes.
Amy Lee?
Yes.
Ronnie Wright?
Yes.
One of the nice things about being mayor is you always get the last word. So, in 2003, I have something I just want to pass along, I was lucky enough to be elected to city council, served four years in that seat before I ran for mayor. Citizens of Harriman saw fit to give me a shot, a shot at mayor, and I did so for the last nine years. We've, we've had a lot of time and we've made a lot of accomplishments over the last nine years. It's mainly because of the vision and the open-mindedness and the strong backbone of the people that are sitting up here, because we have made hard decisions over the past nine years, and we've done it in spite of, in spite of what I call bitter nasty people that sit around and only gripe about things that we're trying to do to make the place better, and we refer to them as naysayers. And myself, most of the time, the naysayers don't bother me very much, and as a matter of fact, we probably need to extend a thank you to them, because not only myself, but I've seen this body work extra hard in the face of criticism of people that just sit around and gripe all the time, and a lot of times, I've seen these people work hard and double down just to prove them wrong. So, thanks to the naysayers, because what you were trying to do didn't actually work, it actually backfired on you, we worked extra hard and had sometimes four and five meetings a month. But let me recap the last, the last nine years, just to remind everyone what this council has done for $75 a month, mind you. And I'm not griping, I'm just making you aware, because they're trying to increase the pay. But not only have we balanced a budget every year, unlock our federal government, we've balanced a budget with the help of Dr. Curley, of course, but we've done so without burdening our, our citizens with a tax increase. We haven't had a tax increase in at least the last, Jerry, I don't know, not in the last 13 years that I've been here, and it was before that, so it's been at least 16 years since we've had a tax increase. When I started in 2003 on the city council, we had a tax rate of 174, now it's 122. We've also created our, increased our credit rating, thanks to Dr. Curley's hard work, once again, to, I think it's an A1 rating, which is at the top, and we have, we've gone from a minimal fund balance to a fund balance of almost $800,000. We've paid off enough debt, and we've found enough new money to increase the recurring new money of about $900,000 a year, starting this year that we haven't had in the past. So we've worked on cut budgets. We began a new hiring process for all the departments that gave us a more professional presentation that many times included a panel of employees and citizens. We stopped renting space from our neighbors at HUV, and we bought our own city hall, imagine that, the city actually owned their own building, we bought it for 50% of what its appraised value was. This allowed Harriman and the taxpayers to actually have their own city hall. Our taxpayers are able to have a place and come like this, where we have meeting rooms, and also, all of our offices are located in one building, making it more efficient for them. The police departments lowered the calls over 50%, we started a reserve force, which saved us money, and also an explorer program, which has gotten our youth involved. Rather be, rather than being the lowest-paid police department in the area and answering the most calls, we're now at the top of the pay scale, and we've reduced our calls by 50%. And rather, rather than having to hire certified officers from other departments, we're now hiring based on qualifications, including college degrees, and we're able to send our new hires to the academy. We've purchased new off, duty weapons for our officers, which was, we weren't doing nine years ago. Patrol cars are now equipped with the latest technology, including body cameras, which we all know how bad we need. Fire department has lowered the ISO rating, the fire department has also grown to include an explorer program for training our youth and getting more involved. Fire department's seen a change in the workday from, to include a 22-hour workday that has reduced our overtime. Street department, the street department has had to take on the task of cleanup while also seeing a reduction in their manpower, so that we didn't raise taxes. This department's had to work harder with less employees. We've implemented the use of a prisoner workforce program, picking up thousands of bags of trash along the road. Many years, we held Pride Day where local creeks and streams were cleaned up, collecting hundreds of tires and trash as willing, as well as allowing the public to drop off their garbage and clean their houses free, free of charge. We secured a grant that allowed us to finally light the intersections on the north end of Harriman, around Wester Pike and on down further, making it safer for travel. We completed a one-plus, one, a $1 million-plus-dollar project for putting new sidewalks and trail lighting on Morgan and Walden Streets. We created Harriman's first TV station, Channel 15, is managed by Roanoke State Community College right now, and there are students that are taking classes in there and expanding their curriculum and their education. We've invested in a recreation for not only our youth, but also for our seniors, and we've done that, the golf course is enjoying new golf greens and watered fairways. This, if this investment hadn't been made, we probably would have lost one of the state's oldest golf courses, and yet another asset of Harriman that would have been gone. We put up new fencing in our ball fields, increasing safety and appearance without costing the taxpayers any money, we got that with free money. We're replacing and upgrading our playground equipment at all the parks at no cost to the taxpayer. We secured free money to improve the appearance of our interstate exchanges, which the new council is going to get to do, I look forward to seeing that. We've worked closely and we've secured a boys' and girls' club, so for the first time in Roanoke County, the first boys' and girls' club is in Harriman. We've worked with the EPA, we're seeing the paper mill property to finally be cleaned up, not costing us any money once again. We started the banner program downtown, which helped improve the appearance of our downtown. In the face of Roan, in the face of Roanoke County possibly losing its hospital, one of the first things that we did, we saved over 400 jobs from being eliminated, but we also negotiated a deal with Covenant Health, and now have a $76 million full-service hospital that serves the county. We have worked with the Princess Theater Foundation and have helped in the revitalization of the old theater that is now a real showcase, that has brought over 10,000 pedestrians to our downtown that would not have been here if it weren't for that theater. This was done without any taxpayers' money from the city budget. We replaced and upgraded all the traffic lights downtown with a new LED technology, improving the safety and appearance without costing the taxpayer any money from our city budget. In light of the hospital moving to another location, we recreated the industrial board, Chairman Bill Alexander's here, because of their hard work, with the assistance of this council, they've been able to successfully sell 13 of the 14 buildings that were left vacant downtown, and of those buildings, almost all have been restored or are being restored, and have new businesses in them, I saw Randy Ellis here earlier, he's got one in there. They're modified for commercial or residential. There are now well over 60 people living in our downtown district that weren't living there just a couple of years ago. Because of the work and the focus of our downtown revitalization, coupled with the addition of the princess, we've created an environment that is once again conducive for businesses downtown. Although we've got a lot of work to go, we've at least turned the corner and have actually welcomed our 39th business to the downtown district, and that's going from the bridge to the high school. That's a big deal. We've resurfaced nearly $2.5 million worth of roads. Currently, we're experiencing the largest retail growth, I think, in the history of Roanoke County. Harriman's the largest city with the largest retail base. Month after month, Harriman continues to grow and be number one in the sales tax collection, and we're widening that gap every month with more businesses come in, and we're still the largest city. Last but not least, we changed our city charter to include the professional management of a city manager, probably one of the better things that we've ever done. Because of this, we're operating more efficiently and effectively, and with this move, Harriman will only continue to improve and grow. So as I close this meeting, I want to thank my family for making it possible, being like Councilman Mead, to be here for the last nine years. I'm flattered to be here, this is, this is what Governor Haslam said, this is where the rubber meets the road. When people don't get out and vote for their local officials, this is, this, we affect you more than anybody. We affect you more than the state government, or the county government, or the federal governments, and I want to encourage everybody to support your local government. And talking to everybody up here, in my opinion, this is probably the most honorable position to have in politics, because we're actually elected by people that actually know us, not by what the commercials say on TV. So, so it's an honor to, to have this job, I've done it to the best of my ability, and I've enjoyed it, and having said that, as usual, I want to remind everybody to go to the ball field, Wallace Blackfield, at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday morning for the, for the ball games. Cruising is also this weekend, and one last time, be sure to shop Harriman and shop Roanoke County, there's a motion to adjourn. Motion.
Thank you.